I love reading because it makes me happy.
Reading was really important to me in lockdown because I could get out of the house when you're not leaving your bedroom.
I started reading because I felt quite lonely, so the characters gave me company.
Reading was important to me during lockdown because learning was much, much harder.
During Covid, I discovered reading was good for me because it would actually help me with my online lessons, so I could read something and then come back and answer the questions. I could really understand it and it actually helped my growth mindset.
Reading was helpful because it just let me get away from the world and it just made me feel happy. And if I was sad, if I just read a book, I'd stop crying and I'd just get so into the book, I'd finish the book by the end of the day.
Reading was really helpful at lockdown because it was very confusing and when I was reading, like it could just clear my mind.
Well, I was struggling a bit with like online classes and stuff like that, but reading helped me like gain all the knowledge that I've missed out on.
During lockdown, if you ever feel lonely, you can read a book and you'll have someone there with you. It's magic.
It's great to see you all here. Thank you for coming for the formal launch of the Essex Year of Reading. Why the task force? The Essex Education Task Force is funded by Essex County Council, but independently, and may I say excellently, chaired by Roy Blackford, CBE, former Her Majesty's Inspector, the founding CEO of the National Education Trust, and of netacademies.net, and the founder of blinks.education. Members include Essex County Council, myself, and the Director of Education and other officers from Essex, but also representatives from the early years sector, primary, secondary, special schools, further education, voluntary, and the youth sectors. Schools are represented by their appropriate associations, such as ASH, EFA, ESSET, and FEDEC. Don't we love an acronym in education? The purpose of the task force has been established to work with settings, providers, and stakeholders to oversee and address both the short and long-term impact of Covid-19 on children and young people's education and emotional wellbeing. In July 2021, it was announced that the task force will invest 1.5 million pounds in reading and children's mental health and other things. But to support children and young people affected by Covid-19, so that no child's education is adversely affected in the long term as a result of the pandemic. Of this, 1 million pounds will be invested in reading. The main delivery vehicle for this spend will be through the Essex Year of Reading 2022. And if I may, I just want to outline the vision that is emerging within my portfolio, which isn't just education, it's skills, but the vision is about lifelong learning. And this is very much linked to the everyone's Essex strategy, which was launched at the beginning of the new administration, when it was elected back in May last year now. This is about the people of Essex having equal access to excellent learning and training opportunities throughout their life course. This is about levelling up success, driving down inequalities, and providing the means of success in achieving each person's ambitions from early years to further years. Key to this is reimagining how we can affect meaningful and lasting change, overcoming through removing as many barriers as possible to excellent learning opportunities, as well as inspiring children and adults, so that raising strong aspirations are at the heart of what we all do, working with residents, schools, and communities. This is why the Year of Reading is so important. So the Essex Year of Reading is a year-long campaign for the calendar year 2022. The campaign has been created to ensure that every Essex child is able to read at their age level or better. A big ambition, but one that I absolutely welcome, and I know Roy and the task force do as well. The campaign is centred around three themes. Firstly, renewal, to support children and young people who have fallen behind with their reading since the first UK lockdown in March 2020. Before Covid-19 hit, one in four children were leaving primary school unable to read well. And the pandemic has worsened the situation considerably, with disadvantaged children suffering the most. Secondly, equality. We know that reading confidently is the golden key to becoming a successful learner. And thirdly, ambition, to ensure, as I said, that every Essex child leaves school able to read at their age level or better. As I've said, the Essex Year of Reading is a county-wide campaign aimed at helping every child to become a confident reader. It seeks to address the impact that Covid-19 has had on children and young people's education by providing events, activities, and opportunities to access reading materials and opportunities to develop a lifelong love of reading. Reading is key to being a successful learner, accessing other educational opportunities, and supporting children and young people to develop longer-term aspirations. Discover stories, activities, and competitions that families can take part in by downloading the Essex Year of Reading app. Essex County Council is committed to helping children and young people whose education has been impacted by Covid-19 and enabling them to benefit from opportunities to improve their reading levels. So I hope you enjoy the day. We've got an absolutely star-studded cast of speakers and contributors today, and I'll just take you through the agenda very quickly. So next will be Roy Blackford from the Education Task Force, then we have a contribution from Frank Cotrell-Boyce, who's a screenwriter, novelist, and occasional actor on the Essex Year of Reading. Reading for the Jubilee, we have the Honour of the Lord Lieutenant Jenny Tollhurst being here today and will take us through that. And then we have again a contribution from Derby Toleary on the Essex Year of Reading, who has agreed to be one of our sponsors. And then we will have Carol Herman, head teacher of Shenfield High School, and Tony Taylor-Senko, Shenfield High, on the reading app. We'll then have a break and you might have seen outside is the mobile library, as well as we have stalls, and I believe in things like that. So please take the opportunity to see them. Our network amongst ourselves is very important, particularly as some of us probably haven't seen each other face-to-face for some time. So I would encourage you to take that opportunity. We've now got, after the break, a video vignette, again from the children of Rosakers Primary, Lyons Hall Primary, Janet Duke Primary, and Shenfield High School. We've then got Bobby Mills on establishing the impact that Covid has had, another video vignette. Year of Reading, we have Claire Kershaw, Director of Education. And despite the, I'm sure you all think that I arranged today and sorted out the menu and coffees and things like that, can I just say it's all down to Claire and her team? That, I'm just saying that in case things go wrong later on. But no, seriously, they've worked tirelessly to make this event happen. I just, from a personal point of view, thank them for their work on that. And then we have the importance of reading and the Year of Reading from the leader of the council, councillor Kevin Bentley, and then me just to mop up and say thank you and our goodbyes. But again, the stalls will be open during lunch and there'll be more opportunities for networking. So thank you for your time, for listening to me waffle on a bit. And it's now my great pleasure to introduce Roy Blackford. Roy.
Just to follow on from what Tony's been saying there, when we set out with this task force, the two key aims, we identified in a usual kind of paperwork style a number of aims, but in the spirit of less is more, which I'm a great believer in, we complicate things too much. And seeing there, George, perched, I think your app is going to be a less is more example, isn't it? But in terms of the key aims of the task force, we said yes, as Tony, to echo Tony's point about minimising the impact of the pandemic on all children and young people as quickly as possible with a three-to-five-year overview of phases of regeneration. And I recall when being interviewed for this post by Claire and colleagues, it had at the time, didn't it Claire, Essex Education Recovery Task Force? And I said I wouldn't do this if the word recovery was in the title, because it seemed to me we'd already moved on from that language and Helen and others were very much behind that. Essex does not do things by halves, as many of you in this room know. I work all over the place and walking in here today to see what was in a sense, with respect to the task force members, a bit of back-of-the-envelope thinking to see it realised today is so impressive. Essex does not do things by halves. And you probably know, I could use this as a test question, Andrew will know the answer to this question. I was going to ask about in a meaning of life, but do you remember how many children, how many year sevens are here? How many year fours in Essex? How many year nines? Roughly, everybody says? You should know, because we, it's Essex, isn't it, we? If you're teaching in primary, there are about 17 and a half, 18,000 children in a cohort. That's a big county, trust me from statistical neighbours. And so when you do something in Essex, you may have a million and a half, we'd like another million and a half, I say in front of the councillors, but actually it doesn't go that far if you think about 18,000, 19,000 in a cohort. This is a big county. And of course, very interesting when Bobby talks later politically about the constituencies, which MPs are represented in this county. This is a very important county in the country. But it's always, for me, a kind of bit humbling to think of the scale of the place. So that was point one around regeneration. But the other thing, and I've really learned this from working in Essex in the past and now, you have a lot that's going on, but sometimes it doesn't kind of land. I think Claire often talks about things landing in the schools. And so I think capturing and promoting current innovation and best practice across the education system, that's part of, if you like, we were talking to the Lord Lieutenant about soft power. The soft power of the task force should be to try and land many of the things that you're doing, and that will be referred to later. As far as the task force is concerned, I just really want to give a shout out quickly. I can't see immediately who's in the room. I happen to chair it. There's Jen Grochey, I don't know if Jen's here. Great she is. Carol, I've seen. Harriet in the subversive back row. Joe Nice, maybe somewhere. I don't know whether Joe from preschool, very good. Linda, governance, I've seen Linda today. Claire, Tony. Martin Solder from the voluntary sector. Martin, not, you're representing Martin, thank you. And Dan Pearson, I've seen Dan from the further education. I wanted to list that because it's the first time I've chaired a meeting where people have come out of different silos, if you like. I'd never been in a room where preschool and FE were in the same room with the voluntary sector. I think that's been a distinctive thing, Tony, as you've been attending meetings. And of course, all of those voices have really mattered. So I think just really wanted to say that upfront. Tony, I think, has outlined really where the task force is going and what we're trying to do and so on. And in a sense, this is the kind of culmination of part of our work. I just wanted to offer a couple of reflections really about reading and then read to you. I began my working life in education in HM Prison Brixton, and I believe all educators should spend time in the education department of one of Her Majesty's prisons. I was working on adult, young adult illiteracy essentially. But it is a poignant reminder, if you go into a prison education department, that basic literacy is a birthright that should be denied nobody. And in my days at the National Education Trust, when I ran the charity, as my ties suggest, reading is fundamental, I used to give a talk entitled, Have You Ever Met a Mugger Who's Read Middlemarch? And it was my kind of way of saying that whatever else we do in this room, we must give children and young people that dignity, that self-esteem to read, write, speak with their eyes. When I'm in India, they always talk to me about speak with my eyes. And many of you know I chaired a commission called the Forgotten Third. And for me, that business of failure at 16 is about self-esteem and dignity. How dare we as a nation allow a third to fail for two thirds to pass? That's baked into our system. So I think there's something very powerful for me as a task force about speaking up for young people otherwise who are disenfranchised. But most of all, children need to read, write, speak with fluency to make their way in, you know, what is an endlessly fascinating global society. There's no doubt that the Covid pandemic has changed not only the habits of work, but also those of leisure. Having spent more time at home for much of the past two years, we have all shown, interestingly, a renewed enthusiasm for reading and, George, book buying. Our test George, whom I know of old as a publisher, how many million print books were sold in Britain in 2020? 200 million print books were sold worth 6.4 billion. Anybody in the publishing business has done rather well. If you had shares in it, even better, I was thinking. Anyway, the familiar pleasures of turning the pages of a book have not been replaced by a screen. Thank goodness. In a sense, the old-fashioned technology of the written word is the entertainment of the age and for all ages, as these posters suggest. So what better news then, in a sense, to kick off our Year of Reading with that sense of we have a renewed mission around reading and book buying and so on. And so I suppose we're saying as part of this, let us get Essex reading, every family, every community, every business. And as Harriet knows, the ambition we have really is that I drive into Basildon and on every bus, it says, get Essex reading. I go to Stansted and it says, take off with a book or whatever. The point about, we all know, is that reading needs to get to the parts with some children that other bears don't reach. As far as schools are concerned, I put this challenge down really across the country, and I have to say, I was very pleased to see it in the White Paper, essentially saying, and there are people in this room I know who deliver this, that 90 few per cent of children can read in line with their chronological age if the expectations and the intervention is right. I've believed that for 40 years, I believe it today, and it is a failure of our system that we haven't delivered that yet. I do put that as a challenge. So I say, let every primary school say to itself, almost all children will, almost all children will. I say 90 few per cent, and I don't get stuck on 91 or 93 per cent, but 90 few per cent of children will have a reading age at 11 in line with their chronological. That's the challenge. And as Tony, Sonia, and others who've been working on this, great group of teachers, Rachel and Justine, we really want to embed as a legacy reading ages. Let every primary school, let every secondary school track reading ages, so we genuinely know where we're going. And so secondary schools need to say to themselves, no matter the child's starting point, no matter the child's starting point, almost every 16-year-old, we've said it here and here, every 16-year-old will leave, coming to you, Dan, in the FE, confident readers, confident readers, able to access. And we know from what Tony said, 20 few per cent. We did some interesting dodgy dossier data across the county. You know, many of you contributed. We had fun with it. We asked primaries to say how many children were leaving not able to read in line with the chronological age. We asked secondary schools how many were receiving. The dodgy dossier produced was the fact there was no consistent data, not a criticism, but just a fact. And so the reality, I think, colleagues, is we want to track those reading ages. So every child moves confidently, and it is, as Tony said, such a golden key. That's my reflection really on the pandemic, on why we're doing the reading. And I thought I'd end with reading to you by way of modelling something. I came across years ago, when I actually taught with him in Oxfordshire, when Philip Pullman was a modest teacher. And he wrote at the time, a long wait time, but I think Ruby in the Smoke, those of you know that novel, he said, thou shalt not might reach the head, but it takes once upon a time to reach the heart. Thou shalt not might reach the head, but it takes once upon a time to reach the heart. And I thought I'd say today, because aren't we on the verge of liberation day or something, that we have heard a lot, have we not, predictably, understandably, over the past two years of thou shalt not, thou shalt not, thou shalt not. And I think we need to say, now the masks are off, let every voice be heard, and let's think about Philip Pullman's comment, once upon a time reaches the heart. And I suppose my kind of one wish would be wherever we are, not just in schools, not just in colleges, not just in community centres, but you know, right across the county, though actually we hear children, now the masks are off, reading aloud. I just really want to read to you from, in that spirit, the woman who walked into doors. Hands up if you've read this. Roddy Doyle, you know, the great Irish writer. Have you seen the film The Commitments? Okay, you know where it is, territory. Gangland, if you like, in Dublin, on the wrong side of the tracks in Dublin. This is an adult audience, so I'm going to have to edit some of the language. I've been told by the director anyway, otherwise it becomes the story. But I wanted to read to you from this because it's a very powerful message that teachers can't do everything. Schools can do a lot. There are a number of people I'm sitting in front of from whom I've learned enormously about great primary and secondary education. I won't embarrass them, but I could do. I've learned so much from them. But I also say to them, you can't do it all, because actually children are, you know, every village, it takes a village to raise a child. And in that spirit, here we have Paula Spencer, a much abused mother, father, mother of five children. Her husband has knocked her around. She's written off four children. They've all ended up in, you know, equivalent of HM Prison Brixton. But she has Jack, the youngest, and she's determined to make a difference with Jack. He started crying. I had to bring him down to the shops and give him some soft sweets. I read books with him. I've started doing that. Can you imagine anybody in this audience saying, oh, I've started doing that? He's just a given, isn't it? I've started doing that. He captures her brilliantly. I saw it in an ad. I never did it with the other kids. I never thought. I saw this ad, a picture in a magazine for central heating or coal. A man and his son in a big armchair in front of the fire. The man was pointing at something in a big book on his knee. The kid was cuddled up and gleaming. I, Paula Spencer, wanted to do that. And now I do. I love Winnie the Pooh. I get a bigger kick out of him than poor Jactus. I think he's frigging hilarious. The world, it's all set in, it's wonderful. Christopher Robin is always giving parties. Well, it's well for him, the little devil. He doesn't have to pay for them. So Christopher Robin gave a party for two heroes. Pooh was a hero for saving Piglet's life, and Piglet was a hero for giving Owl a fine house. Everyone had a lovely party and the blustery day turned out to be not so bad after all. I know it off by heart now, so does Jack. I put in mistakes. You know that. And he spots them and he makes me start again. It thrills me how quickly he catches them. He misses nothing. I take out Piglet's name and I put in Jack's. He loves it. Sometimes I'm very happy. And for her, that's a moment of epiphany in the novel. It's a moment of happiness, because after failure with husband and children, she's making a difference with this child. And I read it often because I think it's a reminder to us in the profession, if you like, in the business, that actually all we do in schools is fine, but actually it's what happens in those other, you remember Rutcher's 10,000 hours that children are in school, it's the other 25, 30,000 hours, they're not in school. So for me, it will be a failure, I've said to Claudia and others, who've done a fantastic job in Mountings, it's been absolute failure in Essex, Tony, if Essex Year of Reading is thought about as something just for schools. It's got to impact, you know, on the wrong side of the tracks in Harlow or Chelmsford, or if Colchester, does Colchester have a wrong side of the tracks? Okay, you know what I mean. In a sense, as they use in the American phrase, wherever we are in the county, it's got to impact in the community as much as in the schools. Great credit to everyone who's pulled this off today. Thanks. This man behind the scenes is particularly worth thanking.
We've now got a video message, I believe, from, I'm going to take my glasses off here, Frank Cotrell-Boyce, who I said earlier, an author and part-time actor. And then I'm going to ask our Lord Lieutenant Jenny Tollhurst to come and talk about outlining Reading Ambassador's Project and the Jubilee Project.
Hi, my name is Frank Cotrell-Boyce. I'm a children's author and a screenwriter and professor of reading at Hope University, Liverpool, probably most celebrated for helping create the 2012 Olympic opening ceremony. And I'm very passionate about getting children to read, and therefore I'm very proud, honoured, and excited about being involved in Essex's Year of Reading, the aim of which is to get every child reading confidently. And I want to get behind that message because I think reading confidently is obviously the key to reading for pleasure. And I truly believe that reading for pleasure is a kind of magic bullet for children. It helps enormously with education and entertainment, but more importantly, with wellbeing and happiness, which I think, if we've learned anything over the last two years, it's learning that resilience and the ability to find happiness in your life is hugely important. It's the inoculation, it's the vaccine against all the bad things that might be going to happen. I want to tell you a story about why I became a children's writer, which is a story also about why I think children's books are essential and reading for pleasure is essential. I was working on a film a long time ago, set during the war in the Balkans, the war in the former Yugoslavia. And we shot that film just after the fall of Sarajevo, and I saw the aftermath, the immediate aftermath of a terrible war. Part of that aftermath was ethnic cleansing. And I saw children from orphanages and orphaned children being kind of divvied up among the different ethnic groups as part of the ethnic cleansing operation. I became very interested in this idea of children being kind of moved around as bargaining chips. You probably already know the story of how First Nation children in Australia were often taken into care on the grounds that they had very little chance of growing up as good Australian citizens if they were being brought up by Aboriginal people. So they were taken into care on the smallest of grounds and brought up to be good Australians. So we became very interested in this story and I met a woman called Mariela Mayer, who's quite a distinguished Swiss German writer, who'd written about these things. And the reason that she'd written about these things is that she herself was a Roma gypsy who'd been taken into care as a child for exactly the same reasons, the idea that the state did not believe that Roma gypsies could bring up their children properly. So she was brought up in this icy regimented institution, and she really kicked against it. She was very rebellious. She was moved to 13 different bostels. She did a spell in prison. She narrowly amidst having a lobotomy. But when I met her, she was this writer. She was incredibly articulate. She was very amenable. She was very outward-looking. She wanted to help people and she was good fun to be with. I wish I could show you a picture of her. At the end of our conversations, I asked her this question, a personal question, because I wanted to know. I said, Mariela, you were brought up in this very regimented institution from infancy, but you pushed against it. How did you know that there was more to life? How did you know that you deserved more? And how did you know that there was happiness out there? And she said, she said, I read Heidi. And I, as you can see, I can't even say that today. That's the reason I became a children's writer. I was writing films at the time. I just thought, oh, I had no idea that a book could do that, that a book could blow down those kind of prison walls. And as a children's writer, you're privileged to talk to your, to meet your audience a lot. Like going to schools, and in fact, I go into prisons, and I meet children who are in a different way as imprisoned as Mariela. They're imprisoned by ideas about masculinity, about class, about aspiration, and about religion and race, all those things. And I believe that a book that is read for pleasure, read on your own terms, is dynamite, that can blow those kinds of... is dynamite, that can blow those walls down. That you find yourselves in books. I think Ian Foster said, we read to know that we're not alone. So people in the most extreme circumstances can find their way out by knowing they're not alone. A funny story is that I have a blood condition which makes me change colour. That was very difficult growing up. I turned yellow, so I was brought up being called Banana Man, Custard Face, Marzipan Man, all those names were thrown at me at school. My dad read me a book that showed me that changing colour could be a superpower. He read me The Incredible Hulk and that really empowered me. So I think reading for pleasure is a huge thing for building happiness, for building great people, like the person that Mariela became. And I think the Year of Reading is going to do a lot to change that. I would put in a plea for the magic of reading aloud. Being read to, there's something primal about being read to. I think it takes us back to that first campfire when we were first becoming social human beings. And also, if you're lucky, if you're one of the blessed ones whose parents read to them, it takes you back to bedtime and to the comfort and the love of that moment. So being read to is really, really important. I'll tell you another story about this. I did a reading group in a prison. We were reading Henry V, of all things. And I was speaking to one of the prisoners afterwards and he said this thing that absolutely shook me. And he said, I love the reading group because it's the only time in my life that I feel fully alert without feeling threatened. And what does fully alert mean? It means fully yourself. And without being threatened, that's because in that reading group, we didn't ask any questions. We didn't ask anything back in return. We did not ask questions or ask for feedback or anything like that. It was not transactional, we just read to them. Everybody loves being led, read to. Sometimes children look as though they might not want to be read to, but they do really. I'll tell you one last story. I was in a school in Glasgow at the end of the Edinburgh Book Festival. And it must have been the specialist school in testosterone because these boys were huge and menacing. And I read a bit from a book called Cosmic and I left it on a cliffhanger. And I said, have you got any questions? And the first boy put his hand up and said, what happens next? And I said, well, you know, we're running out of time, got lots of other questions to get through and glad you want to know what happens next. Pick up the book and read it, or even better, get your teacher to read it to the class. Next question. Can you read a bit more? Well, we're running out of time, but I'm glad you want to know what happens next. So why don't you ask your teacher to read it to the class? Because that's the ideal thing, then everybody gets to read it. One more question. This boy at the back of the class put his hands up. And I swear, this boy was like, he was huge. He was like a postal district with arms. I swear, he put his hand up and the weather changed. And he leaned forward and he went, would you just read, weaver? So I carried on reading. Carry on reading. And carry on reading to children. Share that wonderful experience. Have a great time and I hope I see you during the Year of Reading.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, gosh, what an amazing day this is. And difficult to follow that. So much of it resonated with me. I was also read to and I'm particularly thinking of my grandfather reading to me the Just So stories when I was getting over appendicitis. I am the Queen's personal representative in the county. So I'm going to situate this little break, the little sort of 10 minutes that I've got, which is very much about reading for the Jubilee, by giving you a little bit of a background on what the left tenancy and what my role is about. And you'll see that as I flick through the photographs very quickly, I've picked out ones where I've actually interacted with children. But it all starts with, that's where my boss lives. And that is an engraving of a picture which depicts the Tudor militia. Because the whole thing about the left tenancy started with Henry VIII needing a lieutenant to raise a militia in the shires and counties to keep the peace or join a larger force to defend the country. So to fight the Spanish or the French. So the relationship with the military can still be seen in the support of the Lord Lieutenant, of the military reservists and cadets. And I have a cadet from each of the forces and the combined cadet force, and a St John ambulance cadet. They are the best of the best and new ones are appointed every year and they come with me on many occasions. This is a naval cadet who's with the Duke of Kent when he came to visit the scouts and others the other day. Well, not quite actually, a few months ago. So organising royal visits is an important part of the work. We've had a lot of royal visits and they've become sort of a magnet for all sorts of wonderful things that happen in our county and are appreciated both by the visitor and all the other people who are involved. The Earl and Countess of Wessex came to Essex to visit two of our islands, West Mersey and Farnes, and they finished the day by visiting the Titree jam factory, where because it was the Earl's birthday, we had a bit of a tea party with staff and supporters. A few years ago, the Earl came to play real tennis with schoolchildren and promote the Duke of Edinburgh award. Visiting heads of state often arrive at Stansted and are met by the Lord Lieutenant or a deputy lieutenant. You probably recognise that particular character. The Lord Lieutenant supports the magistracy and encourages people to consider becoming a magistrate. I'm chairman of the Lord Chancellor's Advisory Committee for Essex and Cambridgeshire and that is our main objective. I also attend mock trials where children, schoolchildren act as prosecutor, defence counsel, judge, jury, defendant, witnesses, clerk. Absolutely brilliant. The skills of these children is quite remarkable. And it's quite a dramatic thing to watch. There are two major Queen's awards. The Queen's Award for Enterprise, which is for businesses. It's a great honour and exciting to present this award to our outstanding businesses, of which we have some particularly notable ones in Essex. Similarly, with the Queen's Award for Volunteers. In recent years, we've been extremely successful with this award and a number of my deputies are involved with that. Some of them are here today. The Lord Lieutenant supports the High Sheriff's Justice Service and works with the High Sheriff, which happens at the beginning of the judicial year when everyone connected with law and order in the county gather for a service at Chelmsford Cathedral. The person in red is a senior High Court judge. Commonwealth Service at Chelmsford Cathedral, which happened a few years ago, which was celebrating 100 years of the Commonwealth. And I asked children whose families originated from Commonwealth countries if they would like to come dressed in national costume to the service to celebrate the 100 years of the Commonwealth. It was a terrific occasion. I'm involved with the National Honours at several stages and present the British Empire medals at County Hall. During lockdown, I held an investiture at a house in Billerica where an elderly person asked if I could present it to her at her home outside under an awning. A few members of the family were able to be there, compliant with the rules. And over the road, the workmen down tools and watched and were a great extra audience, all compliant. So you will probably have noticed that this year we are already celebrating the Queen's Platinum Jubilee. Over the whole of the UK, individual people, groups, councils and farmers are planting trees for the Queen's Green Canopy. And I've been to several places around the country and to various lovely schools to help with this. There will be the lighting of beacons and street parties, a service at Chelmsford Cathedral and a festival of the sea in which we are joining with Suffolk to celebrate our wonderful coastline and traditions. There will be a parade of boats in the water between Harwich and Felixstowe in June, which will also hopefully involve Trinity House, the police, the lifeboats and fishing smacks and all sorts of things. But a project that I particularly wanted to do was to work with children. The idea started with a painting competition for schools using the theme of the Platinum Jubilee. It was then thought that this could incorporate poetry as well. But perhaps the most exciting thing was to discover that there was an existing plan at Essex County Council to really focus on reading and encourage young people to find joy in books. So working with Gareth and Ian and combining these thoughts, we came up with an idea. As Lord Lieutenant, I have 60 deputies. Quite a number of them are here today. And 12 of, no, I should think it's more than that. 16 of them are going to help with this project and become story ambassadors. We will visit schools to tell them a little about who we are and what we do. We will talk a little about the Platinum Jubilee and then read to them and have some interactive reading experience. The book we've chosen is Little Elizabeth, The Young Princess Who Became Cream, by Valerie Wilding and Pauline Reeves. There will be lots of other copies of the book available to encourage the students to join in. The hope is that it will not only encourage reading, but fiction and poetry and writing poetry as well, and artwork. The work could be judged with the winning works being published and celebrated. There would also be a special recognition award for students who face particular difficulties. I hope that you think this is a good idea. If you do, then we will find a way of linking you with the deputy lieutenant who lives nearby to your school. This is the book, there it is. And my last slide is of our very modern Queen, who during lockdown interacted in the most wonderful way. I know it doesn't relate to reading, but I just rather like the photograph. Thank you very much indeed. So much of what I've heard rarely rings bells with me. Those little snippets of the children at the beginning says it all. So let's, let's all get reading more. I do read actually quite a lot, but thank you very much.
Hello, I'm David O'Leary, broadcaster and author of the book Toto the Ninja Cat series, based on a true story about my real childhood. I'm also a proud Colchesterian and I'm delighted to be supporting the Essex Year of Reading. Now, it's an incredible campaign which is set up to help children, well, really, carry on learning after they've missed so much during the pandemic and inspire, hopefully, a lifelong love of reading. Ever since I was a kid, I used to go to Colchester Library and always loved opening a new story week, discover new worlds. Plus, reading is obviously very good for your mental health. I've always loved reading, always loved writing, even when I was a kid. Now I've got a little boy of my own and even though he doesn't really understand these books, we have some precious moments together, largely with that book. And evidence is all around us that we know that if children get to read in their childhood, then they are successful in adulthood. They achieve better grades at school, link to success. And it's a benefit that's passed on down to future generations, which is why I'm supporting the initiatives like the Essex Year of Reading. Now, as part of the Essex Year of Reading, I'll be talking to loads of primary school children across the county. This is just one of many opportunities that are being organised across Essex in 2022, activities that are going to make reading fun and engaging for all children. The Essex Year of Reading is a wonderful opportunity to help children to make sure you get involved. Thanks a lot.
I'm a head teacher at Sheffield High School. I'm very pleased to be a member of the task force, as you've heard this morning, chaired by Roy. And it's been a great pleasure to work with a variety of people, the voices from all of the different sectors, including the voluntary sector, as well as every aspect of education in Essex. And I felt all along that this was a group of people who were going to get things done. And I think the fact that we're all here today has demonstrated that we are getting things done. A huge amount of work's already gone on. A huge amount of work will continue after these presentations today. But Tony is in fact going to speak in a moment about the app and the fiction competition. I just wanted to give a slightly different perspective from the perspective of a head teacher of a big secondary school. And as you've seen, there's lots of different aspects of the Year of Reading and a lot of different aspects of the task force. But from my perspective, thinking about reading in a secondary school is vital and at the heart of learning. As Tony was saying when he gave his introduction, it's the key to everything else. And in a secondary school, I think we focus on enjoying reading, of course. And you'll find all sorts of strategies and creative ideas for making sure that young people read for pleasure. And we also focus on reading to learn. But recently, we've had to think much more about children learning to read, even at secondary level. I just want to tell you a little story really of how I got to a point where I realised that we had to think radically differently within a large secondary school. And it was about four, five years ago, Tony will correct me if I'm wrong. But it was the moment where we'd been dealing with the fact that our curriculum was becoming more and more content laden. And we were focusing on all of those pressures on us in school of making sure that children could learn great ways of information as part of the curriculum reform and the different style of GCSEs. And there was a moment where a young lady who'd always struggled with school started sitting her GCSE exams and she put her name on the front of the paper and then put her head on the desk. We'd failed that young person. And I would consider that Sheffield High School, like many secondary schools in Essex and across the nation, are successful schools. But the moment that we recognised that that young person, whatever we'd done to try and get that information into her head, all she was able to do when she was examined in the system that we have was to put her head on the desk. I realised that we had to do something different. And I started looking to see what we could do. Because in secondary schools, we're not used to teaching children to read. We don't do that. It's our early years colleagues who do that. They've got the knowledge, they've got that hard task of teaching children to read in those early years. So what do we do as secondary teachers? Head teachers are sort of running mini companies. Subject experts who want to get that information into young people's heads. We had to do things differently. And I started researching and I started reading. And I just want to tell you about something which I found transformational. And those head teachers in the room from secondary schools in Essex will have already heard me say this, so apologies to you. But it was this book. It's called Thinking Reading, what every secondary teacher needs to know about reading. And it's about getting skilled up as a secondary school to teach young people to read if they're two or three years behind their chronological age when they arrive in the school. Now, it's a tough old process. It's quite expensive to do it with this particular methodology. And it needs real expertise from colleagues in the school to understand how to teach a phonics-based programme based on direct instruction to young people who've already felt pretty disillusioned and upset by the fact that they've got to the age of 11 and they can't access the curriculum. And you know what happens, don't you, when people can't do things? First of all, they might mask it, that's one thing they might do, so that they sort of go under the radar. But actually, what very often happens is that they begin to kick off a bit. They are so disillusioned, actually their behaviour will be affected. And that then becomes the young person, who is the person that you know? And as a head teacher, even in a school of 1,500, you know that name because they're not accessing their classrooms, our classrooms and our lessons. They're not doing well and they're beginning to behave badly in order probably to get out of being made to access a too difficult curriculum through reading. And we know what happens, we've heard about that this morning. Roy started his career in a prison. And we've heard about that as well from Frank Cotrell-Boyce. I didn't mean to you personally, being in prison, Roy. Do apologise, you know what I meant. But that's where it ends, isn't it? If you don't get it right, if you don't allow students, young people, not only access to a secondary school curriculum, but to life, because let's be honest, reading is the key to everything, isn't it? It's how we've succeeded in our lives. If we don't get that right, then we're going to have disillusioned young people who end up in the prison system or not being able to read to their own children or whatever aspect of their life is going to be affected. So we wanted to not have a young person who was putting her head on the desk after we'd thought we'd done our best. So we're using this to cut to the chase. And it's a really good direct instruction system. And we are seeing young people now who are graduating that system. And the differences making is profound. They then can access the curriculum. They are behaving differently. They are talking about enjoying reading. So it's the soft end of it as well as the hard end. So we are making sure that we're teaching children to read and we're also making sure that children are reading to learn. This is beginning to gather a bit of a pace across Essex. Other schools are taking this up. We used our ASH Conference to promote this and we had one of the directors of Thinking Reading, James Murphy, who with his wife wrote this book, came to talk about it. And I think we've got six schools in the secondary sector, supported by money from the task force, who are putting this into practice in their schools. And it is spreading, the word is spreading. And I'm very pleased that Tony Taylor, my colleague, Assistant Head Teacher, Inclusion in Sheffield High School, has been seconded to the task force, to the Year of Reading part of the group, to, along with primary colleagues, to spread the word across Essex. The downside of it is that one of the schools The downside of it is that one of the schools he worked in is now employing him from Easter, so I've lost him. But he's doing a fantastic job. And it's about making sure that we all absorb this awful thought, that actually if we don't ensure that children can read and then enjoy reading, actually we're much poorer as a society for that. So I commend this to you. In terms of secondary schools, I think it is about rethinking what our role is anyway. Because I mean, the girl with her head on the desk was four years ago. But post-pandemic, the issue is even more profound. So we have to do it at secondary schools, as well as all the other things that we need to do and the accountabilities we have. Because if we don't do this, we can't actually do anything else. I'm going to introduce you now to Tony Taylor, who's going to come and talk to you about the Real Brief, which is the app and the fiction competition. Tony.
Well, thank you, Carol. And I get the spot just before coffee. And if you're looking forward to it as much as I am, then I'll be as brief as I possibly can. So the Year of Reading Steering Group is made up by myself and my colleagues Sonia, Rachel and Justine, who you can come and see at the market stalls at break time and lunchtime. And we've been working on a wide range of initiatives and interventions that are designed to improve literacy skills for our young people across key stage two and key stage three, with a real focus on year seven. The first thing we've been doing is working with the Hearts for Learning team to deliver school-based training for the Reading Fluency Project. That's currently in 94 schools in Essex. Before the launch, it's in 94 schools in Essex. It's an intervention that's based on prosody. And that's the voice we hear in our head. As we read, if that voice is clear and that voice is giving us that intonation and that repetition of language, then what it actually does is clear our working memory to allow us to be able to comprehend what we're reading. It's an intervention that's delivered in a small group, usually six students, twice a week. Wants to model the prosody and then wants to ask comprehension questions. The young people read the text between those sessions, which again allows them to practise that prosody even further. The Hearts for Learning team use the YOCC assessment of reading comprehension to measure the impact of their Reading Fluency Project. The average impact is two years and three months of reading aid progress from their eighth week intervention. The training for schools took place in January. And as I said, 94 schools are taking part in that. With an average of six students in each, that means we've already had impact on 564 young people's reading skills in Essex. 564 young people in Essex have already been touched by the Year of Reading. That is magnificent. We're also going to begin the Developing Reading Comprehension Programme, which is a four-day training course based on the best practice and current research. And although originally intended for primary schools, it's something that's equally applicable to secondaries. It's been highly effective in supporting schools across all key stages to implement a whole-school approach to improve reading and in particular, reading comprehension. The aim is to ensure that teachers have the knowledge to support children so they leave school with that reading aid at that chronological age. And again, we're looking at that fluency, we're looking at that prosody, we're looking at vocabulary within context, importing vocabulary, reading stamina, reading for pleasure and generating that prior knowledge. The delegates who are involved in this programme will be sharing their learning and resources using an interactive platform so that the practice is continually kept up to date. And teachers from Essex and further afield have found that these strategies shared during the four days have had significant impact on reading comprehension across the curriculum from the early years to year 11. These two interventions are providing teaching staff with the skills to be able to deliver those evidence-based interventions, measured with standardised testing, which is already having impact. But more importantly, both of these interventions will have a lasting legacy. They're based around training staff in schools. And these can be delivered again and again, year on year, for many years to come. And it's very important that schools have the tools to improve literacy, as Carol said. But this must be done in a very clear and sustainable way and these interventions begin to provide this. The Steering Group's also been working with the library service. And the focus of this being ways that we can develop links between local services, building capacity and strategies for schools and libraries to work together. This is including things such as the proposal for a library takeover, where a local primary school will link with a local library, showcase work and then take the kids down to see it. And then hopefully at the weekend, bring mum and dad along or nan and grandad along to see their work on a public display. We're also looking at issuing a library card for every child in Essex, delivered through their schools, a massive achievement. And we're looking at the ways that we can capture a love of books and reading through library visits from schools, or using the fantastic mobile libraries, one of which is outside, to visit schools. We're also having discussions about literacy areas in libraries and using these to create vibrant, exciting and welcoming environments for our young people. And by being surrounded by books, we will enable young people to understand the power of reading and the opportunities it creates for them. And for many young people, this will be their first interaction with the library service. And we're working together to ensure that these links are again part of the legacy of the Year of Reading and continue many years into the future. But there's also the flip side of that in terms of parents and looking at ways that parents and young people can access texts and resources for reading. And therefore, there is a very sparkly and fantastic app. The app provides a massive range of information for parents, from guidance on phonics, to providing reading material for young people, to allowing us to self-publish. And it will provide everything that we need as we launch this critical year of reading for all people in Essex. And one of the benefits of using an app is that you can use recorded word. There are parts of the app that will read the text to you, introduce video clips and highlight the text as it reads, allowing people to follow text as it goes through. Again, this is prosody, this is developing that prosody and that voice in the head that allows the working memory to comprehend what is being read. The app covers a wide range of genres, including fiction, non-fiction, biography and poetry. It uses video clips and pictures to develop and enhance the reading that the children are doing. But the most important part of the app is the ability to use it to portray the voices of the user, the people of Essex. And following on from this launch, there will be a competition that will be open to all people in Essex. Our Essex residents will have the opportunity to enter a competition to produce a piece of writing, from zero to 750 words in length. Why zero? Picture books, equally as important as anything else you will find. The first competition will be fiction. And then over the rest of the year, we'll be launching a poetry and non-fiction competition. And all shortlisted entries will be published on the app. The winner will then be judged by panel editor publishers, library staff and Year of Reading staff. And what's really exciting about this is it will allow young people to be able to read each other's work, allow them to interact with the thoughts of their peers and allow us to overcome some of these barriers of reading. By reading something written by their peers, we want them to be inspired to read and to write, making the legacy of the Year of Reading the impact that it has on our young people. We've today been fortunate enough to hear from some of our young people through the vignette we saw earlier and the ones that are to come. I want to assure you that these were the young people's own words. As staff, we stood back. And what comes through those videos very clearly is that there is a passion for reading and there is a passion for words in our young people. And what we need to do is give them the tools and the vehicle to excite them. And I'm going to end with the world of Charles Dickens, one of the great social reformers through the written word. And in David Copperfield, he said, "The most important thing in life is to stop saying 'I wish' and start saying 'I will'. Consider nothing impossible and treat possibilities as probabilities." The Year of Reading will mean that our young people in Essex can definitely say, "I will". Reading will be possible. And their life chances become probabilities and not possibilities. Please enjoy your coffee, take time to come see some of the stalls, hear about the fantastic work that's happening and see the mobile library. Thank you very much.
I love reading because it opens a gateway to wonder. And when I read a book, it just brings another part of me to life.
I love reading because when you find the right book, you just can't put it down and your imagination will flow wild.
I really like cliffhangers where it's like I really want to get on to the next chapter.
I love reading because I can escape to somewhere else without actually having to leave the room.
I love reading because it's good for your brain and it's better than watching telly.
Literally, I can read for like three hours on end and think it's like five minutes.
It just calms me down a lot when I'm in stressed situations.
I feel like I'm actually in the story. Like, my favourite book is Harry Potter. I actually feel like I'm at Hogwarts.
I like reading because I get to explore different worlds and cultures. I also get to feel different emotions.
It's just amazing to be able to read something and to be able to do whatever you want. And that's why I like reading instead of actually watching films, because you read it and then it's like, oh my god, I love the way I imagine it. And then you watch the film, it's like, oh.
Just get out there and read, like, it's the best thing in the world, I guess.
Great, well, I'm here today from Education Policy Institute and we are an independent research institute specialising in quantitative analysis of national data. And our aim is to plug the gap that exists in education policymaking, where we have a lack of evidence-based policymaking. So we bring the maths to inform the policymaking. So I know this is an event about reading, but the next 15 minutes will be about maths. Can only apologise for that. So since EPI was founded about six years ago, we've become known for our annual reports, which focus on measuring the disadvantage gap in England. And you'll have heard quoted every year for the past few years that disadvantaged pupils end their GCSEs a year and a half behind their more advantaged peers. So the next 15 minutes is going to focus on the disadvantage gaps in Essex. So more on disadvantage than reading. And then Claire, who follows me, will bring it back to disadvantage and reading and where the two meet. So EPI are at the beginning of a long-term engagement with the Education Task Force in Essex. And we've been engaged over the next three years to provide the evidence of what does education renewal look like post-pandemic for different areas of education in Essex. This week, we have published the first of what will be multiple reports. And this first one is looking at the disadvantage gap in Essex and really sets out what was the state of the gap even before the pandemic and how has it changed over the last 10 years? So what was the state of things going into the pandemic and how have things changed since then? So just a couple of definitions which I'll whizz through to give you more context of what we're looking at when I present our results to you in the next few slides. When I talk about disadvantaged, many of you will be very familiar. It's your ever-six FSM, so pupils who have been eligible for free school meals for any point in the last six years. And what we mean when we talk about the disadvantage gap, so at different points in their education, we look at early years, we look at the end of primary school and secondary school. And we compare the attainment of the disadvantage gap, we compare the attainment of disadvantaged pupils with those who are not disadvantaged. And we express it in terms of how many months of progress are disadvantaged pupils falling behind. And in looking at Essex, I have to say that the findings are a bit sobering and essentially they show just how important the work of the task force is over the next couple of years. This first slide is essentially looking at how disadvantaged are pupils in Essex overall in comparison with the national average. So the light green line there, that's the national average. And then we have Essex here, and this is for pupils at the end of their GCSEs. What's the level of disadvantage in Essex? So you can actually see that overall, Essex is an overall less disadvantaged area in comparison with the national average. So hovering around 15% of pupils at the end of GCSEs are ever-six FSM or have been eligible for free school meals in the last six years. So overall, Essex is a less disadvantaged county. But of course, we know that Essex is absolutely huge, very, very diverse. You have Harlow and Clacton, then you have Saffron Walden, very different areas and different levels of disadvantage within. So moving on now to see what the actual disadvantage gap has looked like over the last 10 years. Now, this is leading up to, it goes up to 2019 at the latest. So this is what was happening in the sort of decade prior to the pandemic emerging. And so this is for early years, the early years foundation stage, so pupils' ending reception. And the good and sad news is that EYFS is the only phase in which the Essex gap is actually narrower than the national average. But that gap is widening. So to give you an idea of what we're looking at on this chart, this axis here is the months of attainment that disadvantaged pupils are behind in their learning. And essentially, you want your line to be as close to zero as possible, as that would show that your disadvantaged pupils are on par with their more advantaged peers. And what we find is that the national average tends to hover at about five months. So nationally, disadvantaged pupils' end reception, about five months behind their more affluent peers. And actually, we find that in Essex, pupils are starting reception more school-ready and it appears that they're being supported better in those early years settings because actually, young pupils in Essex are less behind at the end of early years than they are in the national average. However, they are still four months behind their more advantaged peers. And I have to point out, in the last two years, so this is 2017 to 2019, that gap has widened. So for reasons that we can't tell from this data, but are important to look into, in the last two years previous to the pandemic, early years, disadvantaged pupils were falling further and further behind their more advantaged peers. Moving on now to the end of primary school, so the end of key stage two, you can see now that actually the disadvantage gap for Essex is consistently, over the previous decade, higher than the national average. So that means that primary school pupils finish key stage two even further behind than other disadvantaged peoples nationally. So the disadvantage gap in Essex is 10 months. So already by the end of primary school, that is nearly a year behind their more advantaged peers. Moving on to GCSEs, so by the end of GCSEs, you can see quite an interesting picture for Essex. And overall, the key stage four gap, it closed in Essex more rapidly than nationally, sort of in the middle of the 2010s decade. But it has since begun to widen. So there were certain points in the last decade when the Essex gap was in line with the national average. But it has since been widening, whereas the national average hasn't, well, it hasn't gotten better, but it hasn't got worse either. And I should say that we're kind of suggesting in these slides that being in line with the national average is a success story. Sadly, it isn't. Because we know that for all students nationally, as I mentioned, they are a year and a half behind their more advantaged peers. And the progress towards closing that gap has stalled and stalled and stalled over the last couple of years. And we're now seeing evidence that that is widening. So that is the overall idea of what's been happening in Essex up until the pandemic. As I mentioned, there's huge, huge variety of what goes on in Essex. There's real different experiences of young disadvantaged people depending on where you grow up, depending on your family backgrounds. So just to have a look at what happens when you look at different parliamentary constituencies within Essex, this won't be hugely easy to see, but I just kind of want to tease this. And if you're interested, please just Google Education Policy Institute, you will find it. This report has been published this week, so you will find it on our website. To tell you what this graph shows, essentially, if you are in this quadrant here, and these are all the Essex parliamentary constituencies, then your gap is smaller than the national average and your attainment is higher than the national average. So every parliamentary constituency in Essex wants to be in this top right-hand corner because then you have higher than average attainment and your disadvantaged peoples are less behind your more affluent pupils. And you see that, so this is for early years. Essentially, as you would expect from what I previously showed you, most parliamentary constituencies for Essex do have higher attainment and a smaller gap. So you've got Rochwood in Southend East here, you've got Harwich, Colchester, Molden. But then over here, so this is basically the quadrant you don't want to be in because then you have lower because then you have lower attainment overall and a larger disadvantage gap. And sadly, but probably not surprisingly, Clacton is in this quadrant for every single phase, so for early years, primary and secondary. But Clacton is an outlier in a way because it's in the same quadrant for every single phase. However, you do see all the other parliamentary constituencies, they jump around a bit. So there's different pockets of really good things going on in different areas and also areas that need to be addressed. So I know because this is hugely visible, I can't really go into it in too much detail, but Brentwood and Ongar is in the sort of, you know, the Holy Grail quadrant for primary and secondary school. But then you might see that, okay, Saffron Walden has higher attainment but a larger disadvantage gap. So it might be interesting for you to Google up the report and have a look in detail at where these parliamentary constituencies lie. So I'll leave it there, but essentially, what our report has shown is that there are some real challenges in Essex. What evidence we do have of what's happened after the pandemic has shown that there is evidence that the disadvantage gap is continuing to widen at secondary and primary school level. We do identify positive things happening all across Essex and especially in the early years' settings, where I mentioned pupils seem to be joining schools more school-ready and better-supported. But then there are some serious problems that are happening later in school life. So we just hope that this research is going to continue to support the task force to identify priorities and to target renewal in the best places. So I'll leave it there. Thank you very much.
I love reading because it makes me happy and I can learn words that I don't really know.
You can build your imagination off of reading, and when you're on your phone, like, you can't really.
It will help you grow your mind and you can also, like, get new words from it.
Just say 15 minutes a day and it will get your brain focused more, and then you'd enjoy the book and it will really open the gateway to wonder for you.
Books really inspire me to do things in a book, in the real world, and it helps me grow confidence.
I like reading because I learn loads of new words.
If you read more, like, you know better words, so you'll get a better job.
A book will take me somewhere better in life because I get more knowledge of what I have to do to be better in life and what I want to do as a job and, yeah.
For me, reading is something that's really essential in life skills. You wouldn't really be able to do anything without reading. It's good for your mental health, it's good for your growth mindset, it's good for lessons. And then you can pass on your knowledge to other people and make them happier. Because one book could make someone going through a really hard time smile.
It would just take me anywhere. It can take me to Antarctica or it could take me to space. It can just, like, I can do anything just by reading a book.
I think we've heard a lot this morning about the transforming power that reading brings to children and a lot about why it's so important that one of the priorities of the task force is around reading and having that as a key target across Essex. But you've also just heard some very sobering statistics about some children that don't do as well as they should do in the County of Essex. And I really want to bring those two things together over the next 10 minutes, if that's okay. Because as the Director of Education, I've had to work with all of the head teachers, probably during a time that it was unimaginable, absolutely unimaginable, unimaginable. You would never have thought that as Director of Education, I would be asking the majority of children to be at home and to learn from home for very long periods of time. And we did it because of the public health of the country. And we got to sort of March 2020 when we went into lockdown, we came out during the summer. And we thought, phew, didn't we, a little bit, our lives were getting back to normal. And then we had a turbulent autumn term in the academic year 2020, 2021. And we kept the schools going, and you guys doing that did a sterling job. And we had high rates of infection and we had children in and we had children out. But we kept on going. And then come January 2020, when we went into the third national lockdown, but the second period of school closures, I started to think, this is really serious for our children's education, really serious. We all had hoped that children would bounce back in September 2020. But for them to go back into a period of remote education at that time, an unknown length of time, I really felt, and I spoke with Helen Lincoln, the Director of Children's Services, my goodness me, the schools are doing the very best they can do, absolutely going above and beyond every day of the week. But do we need to do more? Can we do more? What more do we need to do? So I'm really proud to be standing here, as Roy said and councillor Ball has said, with the task force behind us, working to support the incredible day-to-day job that every teacher and member of support staff does in our schools every day. But as Bobby has said, we didn't go into the lockdowns as good as we could be. And so how do we bring both of those elements together? Reading unlocks so much talent for our children and young people. And our more disadvantaged children and young people do not do as well as our less disadvantaged children in that regard. So that's why today is so important and highlighting where we were, particularly with our disadvantaged children. But I just want to come on to a few more statistics about why reading is so important. And then just to share with you, Carol and Tony and Roy and others have shared, you know, our vision for what we want to do. But I just want to share a bit more about the detail behind the Year of Reading. But a little bit more about also disadvantage and how we're responding to that as well. Research from the National Literary Trust tells us that children's love of reading declines as they get older and other interests develop. The most engaged readers were those aged eight to 11-year-olds. With 62% of children said they enjoyed reading. This drops back to 48% of 14- to 16-year-olds. And we know other interests come into children's lives at that time. But we also know that our disadvantaged children, their reduction in their love of reading will decline even further. As Carol has so passionately said, if you can't read fluently and you don't have good comprehension, your ability to access a secondary curriculum just makes your experience of secondary education even tougher and even harder. And I know that the programme that Carol shared with you is transforming the work at Shenfield Primary School and others to follow as well. And you've heard Tony talk about the Hearts for Learning Programme and the support that we're putting in there. And I think that just absolutely goes to show the importance of both supporting schools to improve teaching of reading and the love of reading within the education settings, and then the beyond reading and how we really get the County of Essex behind that. So what you've got here is sort of really the pillars of this year, bringing the Year of Reading to life, absolutely. And you've heard a lot of this this morning, so I won't cover too much of it. But really, we've got the pillars of visibility and engagement, access to tests, reading skills, and then language development. And within the language development, you'll see there around family learning, library parent and child events, home care partnerships, working with adults with dementia, bringing children and adults with dementia together as well as one of the Lord Lieutenant's projects too. And that's really important, that this is seen as whole family, beyond school, and really energising everything that we want to do. We've talked about authors coming in, authors visiting, bringing the libraries in. And I hope you really did get enthused by the market stalls that you visited during the coffee break. We will make many programmes available to every phase of education within Essex as well as focusing on parent and community groups and really looking at our vulnerable and marginalised children and families and how we can support them to be the best that they can be, to support their children to be the best that they can be in that regard. So it will be action-packed. So today is the formal launch, but it's not the last time we will talk about this. So please do say to everybody, Essex is celebrating the Year of Reading this year. But I want to come back to disadvantage now. Because if I was standing here today after reading the report that Bobby and the Education Policy Institute had done without a response, I might be walking out of that door, to be honest with you, as Director of Education. But it's really important that we bring our strategies to life and bring them together. And Roy talked about the priority of the task force aligning all of the strategies so they have maximum impact in terms of the interventions and what children, young people, need. So we have been working on disadvantage, it has been a priority. It's something I've known about for a while now, and Bobby's data just really sharpens that going forward. So we have been doing an evidence-based piece of work on how we can address educational disadvantage in Essex. And coincidentally, because we didn't know about the Year of Reading when we published the book, but it is a book, I meant to bring it up, but it is a book. And we've been really privileged that we've had Mark Rowland working with us, with Philippa Holliday, my Assistant Director, leading on the strategy and taking that work forward. And as I said, it's very much evidence-based and very much steeped in the research, which is why it's great that we've got the Education Policy Institute working with us going forward. And it really focuses on what we know makes the most impact on disadvantaged children. And that's around relationships, it's around a growth mindset, it's around metacognition, it's around a development of language and communication skills. And those are the key themes sitting behind the book going forward. And what we really want to make sure is that we close that gap and accelerate the closure of the gap that Bobby outlined. It's not just about working with schools, again, it's looking at the family hubs, it's looking at our Essex Child and Family Well-being Service to support too, it's looking at early years and the work of our early years service as well. So it spans everywhere in terms of what we want to do. So far, we have had over 380 schools engaged in the strategy, which is excellent. And if you're here and you're not, I would absolutely urge you to get engaged. We have 472 disadvantaged champions now trained across our school network. So we are there, starting to pull this together. But of course, we're coming out of the impact of the pandemic, which we know has only made the situation tougher for some of our families and children. We're working with our system leaders, we're working in partnerships, we're working through the school partnership networks that we have, the Essex Teaching Hubs, and with our governors as well. We can't forget our governors, they're vital and pivotal in the support of this strategy going forward. It's based on collaboration, it's based on systemic change and systemic improvement. And we will be looking at both qualitative and quantitative evaluation of the work going forward. So I think if you didn't need another reason to get behind the Year of Reading, I think the disadvantaged children of Essex has just given you that as well. So what we will be doing through the work of the task force is really now bringing those two strategies together. So we absolutely have eyes and ears on all of our children, and we must have eyes and ears on all of our children, but even closer look and detail at our disadvantaged children. So thank you very much.
Well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, Lord Lieutenant, High Sheriff. The glitterati of Essex to be here, fantastic. And I have to say, I pay tribute to the Lord Lieutenant and High Sheriff because they do such a huge amount of work, most of which you don't see. In this particular field, they are very committed, and you know that because you've seen them here today, which is tremendous. I also want to say thank you to all my Cabinet colleagues and county councillors in the outer Cabinet here. I was just in County Hall wondering where everyone was, and they're all here, so I now know what they're up to. And I want to say as well just how important that this Year of Reading is and how important it is for us, not just as a county council, but for the whole of Essex as well. When we came back into office in May after the county council elections, I was very clear as the new leader that we needed to change slight direction, not completely, but in a different way of how we're going to approach our politics and how we're going to approach our policies in this county. And we launched something called Everyone's Essex. I hope you've had the chance to see it, and if not, please go onto the website and have a look. It sets a plan, a blueprint of how we are going to tackle some of the most fundamental issues in our county that we perhaps haven't done so for many, many years. Prosperity comes through education, and it's very important for us as an administration that no one is left behind. I'm sure Tony has mentioned to you about our three core pillars, which is renewal, equality and ambition. With renewal, making sure as we come under the post-pandemic world that we're achieving all the things we need to achieve and the new ways of working, and making sure all those in education have all the advantages they possibly can as a result of that. Equality, no one left behind, everyone is equal in our county despite their background or where they're from or their education, everyone is equal. And ambition, this is probably, without a shadow of a doubt, the most ambitious county in the whole of the United Kingdom. We know that, and we're going to make sure everyone else knows that, but make sure we have the wherewithal and the resources that everyone in this county and those who will come to live in this county and those who visit this county know that as well and has those advantages. So I certainly really promoted the, I'm very keen to hear about the Year of Learning. And I have to say, Roy and the Essex Education Task Force is very instrumental and very important in this. When I took over, we'd had some tremendous successes in education, led by my dear friend Ray Gooding, who was the then Cabinet Member for Education. And you've heard from Claire and others as well. And then Tony came into this job. And the one thing I really wanted to focus on is, as you've heard from Bobby's report this morning, our education attainment rate in Essex is very high, around 86%. My view was, what about the other 14%? We don't really talk about them very much. So we must make sure our attainment rate continues and continues at a high level. But there are many people we weren't reaching, not just us, but as society. And I'd like to pay tribute to our educationists, our teachers and our lecturers across this county, and not only through the pandemic but the years before and the years to come, do so much hard work. And quite often, as we are discovering, a lot of lack of attainment has got nothing to do with education, everything to do with social issues. And that is where education and that's where Everyone's Essex comes into full effect here. So we have a levelling up agenda. Now, you've heard levelling up, it's becoming like that other great word people use, stakeholder. It starts to lose meaning after a while because we don't quite know what we're talking about. In Essex, we do. If you have the chance to read the Essex Levelling Up white paper, it's very clear. Our colleague, the Deputy Leader Louise McKinley, is tomorrow in Tendrings. She's been in Harlow, she's going to Basildon and other parts of the county, some of those really hard areas to reach. And discussing levelling up and how we are committing, not just your money but our resources as well, into reaching those areas to make sure everyone has that equal opportunity in life. You see, if they have that equal opportunity, they can attain much more. I use a phrase continually, and my colleagues will probably get bored of me saying it, but I will keep saying it. It was a phrase my mother taught me many years ago, that everyone should have the ability to reach for the stars. Actually, it's not important whether you reach those stars and touch them, it's the ability to be able to reach them and the opportunities to reach them. And that opportunity should be open to all, every single person, whether born here or moves here in the future, they should have that opportunity. Because then they themselves can increase their chances and opportunities in life. But that's also good for the County of Essex, for our prosperity, for the growing prosperity, for jobs and for skills. It also is an attractive advert for those companies we want to come here, but importantly, the existing companies, that they can grow successfully and confidently, that they will have a workforce that they can employ who are well-skilled and well-trained. But also for those young people, and this is where our county really sets ourselves above everybody else, starting their own business. This is the great county of entrepreneurship and ambition. And the ability to do that comes from a solid background and certainly a solid education. And that's where we all come into this. So the Year of Reading is a very important part of what we are doing, a very important part of our levelling up agenda. And it's not just education, it is all of us. So Everyone's Essex, certainly at the county council, isn't just about separate Cabinet members doing separate things. That's why I'm so pleased that so many of my colleagues are here from the outer Cabinet as well as the Cabinet and other areas as well, because we work across the whole piece. Nurturing and caring for younger people and older people and those who need the most desperate need and help is right across everything we do in the county council. And that's why Everyone's Essex is so important, and that's why this is so important. I always remember that I was very lucky as a child, I had parents who read to me, I had great teachers like we have in this county who inspired me in reading, so much so that I became a journalist through the early part of my life. Imagine that, a journalist who became a politician. Imagine that, a journalist became a politician. If nothing else, you can trust me. But what it taught me as well is that everyone had the advantages I had. And that's stuck with me throughout my life as well. And that's why we have this agenda now. And I'm so proud of all of my colleagues, whether they're in the Cabinet or whether they're in offices or wherever they may be in the County Council. I'm so proud of all our teaching staff and those who assist our teaching staff and all those in our colleges and our universities. And all of you as well in other areas. We absolutely have to make sure that the legacy we pass on is not the legacy we inherit. And we will only do that if we do that as a full society. In Essex, I'm proud that we have that. We can't do it just in four years. It will take several years. But we're on the course to make that happen. And this is why Essex will always be one of the greatest counties in the United Kingdom to live, work, rest and play. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Okay, so it comes to me to close the morning. I'll just say, wow. I was certainly blown away by our contributors and the, whether they be in person or on the videos today. Absolutely blown away by the engagement. Just, I can feel the engagement. I hope I'm not overemphasising it. But the engagement that you have given throughout the day, and that's only going to be down to contributors, from the children through to Dermot O'Leary. I can never remember his name. The author, Frank Cotrell-Bois. Thank you so much. And obviously, Carol and Tony from Shenfield High. Jenny Tollhurst, the Lord Lieutenant. I mean, when you think, we've had Commander of the British Empire through Roy, the Queen's representative, a very well known television personality, a very well known children's author, just to name but a few. And Bobby, of course, who had a longer job title than me. And of course, I do exclude myself. And of course, Kevin, it'll only be a matter of time. Of course. And of course, exclude myself from, as I said at the beginning, a star studded cast of contributors. But also, what the leader has challenged us, and he made reference to it, is councils have not always worked across their whole departments. Essex has always been one of the pests. But there is, within local government, an element of silo working. And so the challenge that Kevin has given us and Cabinet members is to work across the whole council. And again, as evidence, councillor Spence here from Adult Social Care, councillor Durham here from Arts and Culture. Absolutely, Arts and Culture, we now have a Cabinet Member for that. And councillor Durham representing him today. Because without Arts and Culture, we're not going to be able to deliver steam. It will be back to STEM. And I think we would all, our children, will be poor for that. We have adult community learning here. Let's not forget the work they do and the parent reading ambassadors, that they're going to help perhaps parents who've had a bad experience at school and are reluctant to go back to school. And adult environment, youth services. Absolutely important, again, under councillor McKinley, who also with the libraries, but also the youth services taking into further years after school. And again, councillor Egan, early years. And she's very much looking to the work gap, which again was that and has an early years strategy. So I hope that's evidence that across the County Council, we are committed to working across the whole system and not, if you like, within our own silos. Lady, you mentioned the contribution that councillor Gooding gave. And of course, he kicked this all off. He secured the money. He had most of the responsibility during the COVID crisis. So I had the pleasure of being his deputy for two years a couple of years ago. So I'd like to thank you, Ray, for your contribution. As I said at the beginning, if it all went wrong, then it was all down to Claire's team.